Good evening, everyone. I'll call this City Council. Good evening, everyone. I'll call this regular City Council meeting to order. You'd all rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Yavino.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any modifications to the agenda this evening, Council? All right, seeing none, I have a proclamation for National American Indian Heritage Month. Don't need to stand behind me, no one will ever see you back there. Now, this is a proclamation for National American Indian Heritage Month, November 2019, whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by the American Indians and Native people, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month, and now therefore, I, Jim Hill, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim November as National American Indian Heritage Month in the City of Sebastian and urge all citizens to reflect upon the contributions of American Indians that have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today.
Hi, thank you. I just have one fact, I like to give an American Indian fact, and it goes along with the 19th Amendment, as this is our 100th anniversary of the passing and then the ratification next year. The Native American women's role in the women's suffrage movement was indispensable in helping gain momentum for their cause. Even the Seneca Falls Convention held in 1848, which kicked off the women's rights movement, was held in the same place as the Hot Nanshani-Iroquois Confederacy, which was led by Native American women 300 years earlier. Thank you.
That's fantastic. Thank you, guys.
We have several brief announcements tonight. The Sebastian Police Department's Movie Night Out is this Friday night at 6:30 PM, not the 6 o'clock that's on your agenda, 6:30, and they're showing Hotel Transylvania 2. Sebastian Police Department's Community Night Out is on October 29th from 5 to 7. The Halloween Costume Contest in Riverview Park is this Saturday from 10 to noon. The Second Annual First Responders Fall Cook-Off has been canceled for November 2nd. The Sebastian Clambake Festival starts November 8th and ends November 10th at Riverview Park. And one announcement that's not on there is the Veterans Day Service at Veterans Memorial at Riverview Park will begin at 11:00 AM on 11/11. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that. It's such an exciting time of year. I love it when the brief announcements start to get longer every year of things like the Halloween costume and the clambake and all of those wonderful things that make Sebastian super special. And when I saw the brief announcements on the agenda, I was very stoked and very happy that we're rolling into this amazing season. Any other announcements from Councilmembers? All right, seeing none, I will now recess the City Council meeting and reconvene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. Ask for a motion on 7A.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Thank you. That moves us to item 7B, the Septic Sewer Grant Program. Item BI, grant for 13060 U.S. Highway 1. Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you. I'll let Lisa fill in on the details, but this is a grant, under the grant program, it'd be a $5,000 grant, and it's removal of an old septic tank in connection to the county sewer system. Want to add?
No, that's self-explanatory. What I want to share with the Council, though, is that we have sent out recently postcards to all of the property owners who are now eligible for connection to the gravity sewer line that the county just installed in the North County portion of Sebastian. Excuse me. And so, we sent out postcards informing them that they, you know, we have this grant, we received it from Indian River Lagoon, and that the county is waiving their impact fee charges until April. So, I'm forewarning the Council that I think you're going to see more and more of these in the next several months, as we have now sent out the postcards. So, the next three in front of you are kind of the result of all of that.
Well, that's great. You know, it's really the whole idea of this grant, and it's nice to see the county finally doing something, kicking a little bit in by waiving that impact fee, because that certainly helps a lot of the owners along that strip. Council, what's your pleasure on item BI, under 7?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this grant? Seeing nothing, anything further from Council? Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Kitchen.
Yes.
Mr. Dodd.
Yes.
Mr. Yavino.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Chairman Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move to consider a grant request for 821 U.S. Highway 1. Mr. Gilbert. Page 31.
I got it. Yes, this is a $10,000 grant for a commercial building, and it includes installing a lift station, as well as removing the sewer septic tank.
This piece of property is actually just for the gravitational, but there's two tanks. And if the Council recalls, we stated that we would provide up to $5,000 for a gravitational connection, and then up to $5,000 for additional tanks in the system, operatable septic system. So, in this property, they had two tanks, and so, that's why you're seeing the $10,000 cost grant request.
That's great. Council, what's your pleasure on item BII?
Move for approval.
Go.
Second.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Dodd. Mr. Yavino.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Chairman Hill.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kitchen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, finally, a grant request for 13,000 U.S. Highway 1. Mr. Gilbert.
This is a grant of $10,000. It involves the removal of two septic tanks. Lisa, you want to add to that?
Well, I want to add that I goofed up. The one before was for the two tanks, and this one is for the, I'm sorry, the one before was connection to the sanitary sewer and had to have a lift station, and the one previous was the two tanks, but it's still for $10,000, and they're great projects, so, sorry.
Council, what's your pleasure?
Second.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on the grant request for 13,000 U.S. Highway 1? All right, seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Yavino.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Chairman Hill.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kitchen.
Yes.
Mr. Dodd. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. So, everyone knows that these are grants to help our businesses along the riverfront get out of the septic business and onto county sewer, so we can stop that waste from going into the Indian River Lagoon. So, this is an outstanding program, it's working the way it should, and I thank Council for doing that. And I'll now, excuse me, I'll now adjourn the Community Redevelopment Agency and reconvene as Sebastian City Council. Please, it's item 9, consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item E.
Item E? Anything else? Council, what's your pleasure on the remaining items?
I'll move approval of item A through D, excuse me. It's actually item F, there's two Es there.
Right.
So, it's the second item E that I want to pull, not the first one.
Thank you.
So, let's go A through E1, and then F through N.
Second.
All right, so you're pulling the GSA contract? Just the one, just the one up there?
Yeah, the second E was the one I wanted to pull.
All right, very good. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Yavino.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Dodd, item E.
Okay, it's kind of simple. On the second item E is a contract to redevelop our website. I had a question about the ongoing annual amount. There's a $3,500 fee to, for the Auto i, Ally, software, and my question was whether that's included in the $8,000 annual maintenance fee that we pay to the prime contractor.
Barbara's telling me that it is.
Okay, all right, that was my only question, and I couldn't see where that actually folded in there, so I wanted to know if we were going to have the other $3,500. All right. In that case, I move approval of item E2.
Second.
Motion is second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on item 9E2? I see none, roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Yavino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any announcements or committee reports this evening? Nothing from your committees? All right, thank you. There are no public hearings, we have some unfinished business, item 12A. This is continued from our October 9th regular meeting, resolution number R-19-29. Mr. Stokes.
It's a resolution of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, vacating a portion of a certain easement on Lot 6, Block 273, Sebastian Highlands Unit 10, providing for conflicts herewith, providing for recording, providing for scrivenage errors, providing for an effective date.
All right, thank you. Who's going to take this one?
Sorry, that was installed, actually, without a permit. This started way back in October of 2018. This pool was applied for, then we discovered there's a problem with the easement issue. The city staff has helped the owner in trying to obtain vacation of the easement, abandonment of the easement from various utilities, including FPL, which took a better part of nine months to get. The case has been brought to the Special Magistrate twice, once in December of 2018, then again, a continuance in July of 2019. So, where we stand right now is the permit is ready to issue, but we need Council's approval to vacate the easement. There is certain conditions in the last Special Magistrate order that they obtain the permit and get the necessary inspections completed before they close out of the permit, and the fees and fines that are accruing daily would continue until that point.
Okay. Is the applicant here this evening? Can you come forward, please, sir? How are we doing? Could you state your name and where you live?
Carl Richards, 561 Benedict King Terrace.
All right, thank you. Do you have anything you would like to add to Staff's presentation?
No, just be glad if this is finally done and over. I don't know as far as the fines and fees, if we had a magistrate meeting last time, there was no mention of fines and fees. We got a letter a week later in the mail stating there was going to be, I don't know if that's legal, to do that without even bringing it up during the minutes, but it's another issue, I guess.
Yeah, my understanding, well, it appears that there are several issues with this property. It's not just, I mean, there are several issues with this property, and is it appropriate for me to ask questions about how the process was done here? Jim?
I mean, it is. I would like to try and get Council to focus on the abandonment of easement, which is before you, versus the, you know, anything the magistrate did, or any forgiveness or enforcement of the fines, because that's a process that you have delegated to the magistrate.
Okay.
So, I mean, if the homeowner, once they get their permit, they come into compliance, first of all, you can't even discuss releasing any of the accrued fines.
Of course not.
Until it's brought into compliance. They get this abandonment, they get the permit, they get everything signed off, it's in compliance, then the homeowner would have the potential to come back and seek those fines to be reduced, and then that would be a discussion to have then, so.
Okay, but the abandonment of easement, does anyone have questions of the applicant at this time?
Well, I have a question for Wayne.
Okay, we're good. Thank you very much. We'll call you back up if we have any questions. All right, thank you. Go ahead.
On the section that's shown for the abandonment of easement, there's still a portion of the decking that's outside of that easement. Is that coming out or staying in?
I believe that's staying in. They don't need to, they can put decking in the easement, but the pool itself is the problem.
Okay, thank you.
Council, anyone else have questions of Staff on this issue?
My question was, I know you want to stay away from this, but let's say we approve the abandonment of the easement, the permit's issued, they finish the work, it's inspected, Wayne signs off on the permit and approves the work. At that point in time, code enforcement will basically say you've corrected the violation, and the owner can reappear in front of the Special Magistrate? If, or how does that work? I just want to know mechanically how it works, is all.
Right. Right now, the way our code is set up, you have not delegated the reduction of fines to the magistrate, and that's why, and as you know, these have come before you before, where somebody's asked for fines to be.
Yes.
Reduced or released. So, it would have to, if they made an application to have the fines reduced or released, they would have to come back to Council to do that.
That's exactly what I wanted to hear.
Right.
I'm good now.
And so, the actual fact is that it seems like the applicant has gone through all the processes in order to rightfully get a relief on this easement, and that does not necessarily mean that this pool will be in compliance. There are many more steps that need to be taken, and there has to be done, work done with the City of Sebastian. So, if we were not to give this, it would be more punitive than, then, I'm trying to think, there's no reason for us to not approve the abandonment. With, well, and maybe Wayne could speak to this more, but, I mean, with any easement, it's all a matter of public necessity. If we feel, or if you feel, based upon Staff's recommendation, that there's a public necessity for us to maintain this easement, then we certainly should. If the easement is no longer needed, there's no public necessity for the easement, then...
And that's what all the agencies are saying, including the City of Sebastian.
Correct, and that's why we have them all sign off on it, that they see no need for the...
But there were issues with FPNL, correct, on the easement?
For some reason, it took an extraordinary long time for them to decide to abandon their easement. They went to their real estate division, and it just took months and months and months, and the city tried and tried to get it corrected and get them to move forward with it, and it just took extraordinary amount of time.
But you actually now have an abandonment approval by them?
Yes, they did. They did sign off on it eventually.
All right.
All right, so we got it, so we have the approval from all the agencies, including the City of Sebastian. I would recommend approval of resolution number R-19-32.
Second.
Any further discussion from Council on this? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Yavino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, that was R-19-29. All right, at this time, anyone from the public wishes to bring anything to this Council that is not currently on the agenda? Please come forward. Ma'am.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, my name is Cindy Geezy, and I'm a happy six-year resident of Sebastian. In April 2016, when nobody knew me, the Council, at Jim Hill's request, signed a proclamation encouraging a program called Rest, Relaxation, and Romance for Active Duty Military Couples. And most of you have heard about this before, and you very nicely asked me recently, would you like an update? And I said, that's very nice of you to offer, and so, here it is. Very proud of this, thank you. With your encouragement, my husband, Adam, and I have been able to plan and host 18 young military couples for three-night, all-expense-paid weekends in Sebastian, not Vero Beach, Sebastian. Your proclamation gave us the credibility as relatively new residents to approach dozens and dozens of businesses in Sebastian, who generously provided resort lodging, all meals, fishing trips, Sebastian T-shirts, lagoon pictures, massages, beauty services, flowers, wine and beer, beach towels and sunscreen, goodie bags, chocolates, fruit baskets, beachy jewelry, gas gift cards, anything I could talk the merchants out of. In the words of one Marine, when we showed them what was waiting for them in their room at Hyrum's, what a haul. This is a non-political, nonpartisan effort that Adam and I dreamed up 10 years ago when we lived in a one-half square-mile beach village in Broward County. We escaped from there, having entertained 36 couples there, but we give all the credit for this patriotic spirit in Sebastian, and to the generous businesses for making this program work here. And some businesses who donate insist on providing every single couple flowers, every single couple an Italian meal, every single couple dinner at Sandy's. They want to be a part of every single couple. We do not choose the active duty military couples who visit, so don't call me. Your relatives cannot come. The great folks of the Greater Jacksonville USO work with commands of all branches of the military throughout the state and up to Kings Bay, Georgia. Yes, we do allow foreigners outside the state. And they select couples who need a weekend, a way to reconnect, maybe because of a recent deployment, illness, baby onboard, or exemplary service. We gratefully function, my husband and I, as volunteers for the USO, a national 501(c)(3) charity. Our record in this community, our former community, and with the USO is unquestioned. No money touches our hands, everything goes through the USO, and everything is tax deductible, of course. We were also honored last year with a proclamation from the Indian River County Commission when we hit our 50th couple. This year, due to a torn Achilles tendon injury and long rehab hubby, we couldn't host our couples, but in 2020, we planned to host six active duty military couples to achieve an overall total of 60 couples for the program. Wonderful new neighbors, Bob and Linda Masterson, have agreed to volunteer with us and will bring great new energy. Bob is a retired Navy captain himself and a Vietnam veteran. We generated a great deal of positive publicity for the USO, the military, the City of Sebastian, and its generous businesses. Most notable, and there've been articles in lots of different local papers, we got an 11-page spread in Vero Beach Magazine. Forget this picture, but that's the couple. We lay out the room with all their goodies. Excuse me, Bob, I know you remember this couple. Arnie and Lily Schwarzenberg, he was a Pearl Harbor survivor, passed about a year and a half ago. He used to have breakfast, breakfast with all the 18-year-old sailors. And more pictures of them enjoying their weekend. And a nice little plug for one of our donors. If anybody wants a copy of this, just please let me know. And again, all credit goes to the Sebastian businesses. Adam and I are just the facilitators. It's the businesses who do this. We thank you for your support and your renewed proclamation for this program, and we invite you, if anybody wants to meet any of these couples, welcome to the city, just let us know, and we'll make that happen, too. And again, we're honored to do this for the military. God bless our military.
Amen.
Now, not speaking as USO, just speaking as Cindy Geezy resident, my public comment is to thank all of you out in the dais for your unblemished service to Sebastian. It's obvious that change and growth are inevitable at every community, but it's how you manage these challenges that is critical. You've had some serious decisions to make about annexation, but having had the experience of chairing a planning and zoning board for four years in similar circumstances in a beach village, I think you've all shown genuine love for the community, concern in retaining its small-town feel, dedication in doing your research, and willingness to listen to all opinions. Unfortunately, some people just want change for the sake of change, without doing the hard work of examining the motives of malcontents and naysayers. It's true, the grass may look green around the other side of the fence, but I've hopped the fence, and that's weed infestation that makes it so green. Fellow residents, please do your homework before municipal voting next month. Choose experience and integrity over slick and superficial.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wish to speak? Yes, sir. Sir. Folks, even if we agree with everything she said, we cannot applaud, because we don't want to be disruptive in the meeting, and we want to make sure that we're not intimidating anyone. We treat everyone the same here, so thank you very much for your candor in that. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Hill, Vice Mayor Kitchen, members of the Council. My name is Richard Felton, and I'm the Vice Commander for Legion Post 189 here in Sebastian. My question to you all is that we already needed some help. Back in May, late May, early June, our architect, Todd Smith, submitted to the Council, to the City Building Committee, plans for an expansion of our post. Our post now houses 650 members, and we're busting at the seams. We've been waiting since June, and it has not been approved. We would like to know why.
Okay, we'll check into it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Yes, sir.
Excuse me. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Bob Stevens, I live at 150 Concha Drive. Mr. Mayor, last council meeting, the city manager had said he's had someone working on an alternative product to kill the growth in our waterways. When I asked him if he would give us the name of the product, he smiled at me and said, no. I know, Mr. Mayor, I'd like the citizens of this city to realize that this is a violation. This is a right-to-know thing. You're supposed to tell us what you're poisoning our backyards with, you know? This is unacceptable. You know, we will not accept the chemical control of vegetation in our canals, ditches, and waterways. These are contact poisons. We're not going to accept this. I know you're fighting me on this, and everybody else is with us, but enough is enough. We're not going to accept this. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remind you, get out and vote. Everybody needs to vote. By mail or internet, call somebody for a ride, get out and vote. This is a critical year. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Hill, Councilpeople. Pamela Paris, Gerald Street, Sebastian, Vice President of Property, Sebastian Property Owners Association, local realtor, Sebastian City Construction Board Member, 32-year resident and community advocate. In preparing what I wanted to say tonight, I just reached out to some citizens to ask them what was paramount and really important on their minds, and I tried to summarize three questions, and they should just require short answers from you, Mr. Mayor, so naturally, the Grave Brothers annexation was on top of the list. So, since the expansion of the county sewer system to accommodate all of the new homes and public facilities has not been agreed to, I remember you saying there would be absolutely no septic planted in that new development. Is there any, is it in the executed contract? Where's the documentation that proves that? Because I read the 30, it was a 28-page report, and I didn't see it anywhere.
It's in the law.
It's in where?
The law. Look at the law. You'll see that our law states that it will not, so you can get with the city clerk, and she will direct you to the law.
All right.
I think you did.
And it's open, it's easy for the public to read and understand.
Sure, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Second question was, I was hoping you could clarify and just make a statement, because people don't seem to understand how the dais operates here. Majority vote obviously rules. So, for example, in the 28th, it was unanimous that the annexation will go through, but if three council members disapproved it and two approved it, that would suspend the order. Would that be correct?
I'm not sure I'm following what you're saying.
No? Please, please.
The answer to that question is no.
Okay.
You cannot overturn an action of council unless a person who voted in the majority brings it back up. So, it would take one of the five people who voted in the majority to bring it back up to have it eligible for a vote. So, if, in fact, yourself, since you are running and politicking right now, yourself and two other people get elected to council, you cannot overturn that unless one of the other two, which happens to be myself and Mayor Hill... two, which happens to be myself and Mayor Hill, brings it back up for a vote.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay.
And the last question is a little redundant from Bob's statement, but city manager Paul Carlisle announced a few weeks ago that he had a plan of solution that's been drawn for alternative method to the city, that the city will be using instead of toxic herbicide poisonous spraying for weed control. It included a workshop, and I love that, but I'd like an update, because I haven't heard anything since.
First of all, that's completely incorrect. He did not announce that he had.
I heard him.
Ma'am, did you ask me a question?
Yes.
All right, then, I'll answer it for you.
Okay.
He did not say he has a plan, he said he's finalizing a plan.
Oh.
And when that plan is finalized, it will be brought forward to the public. And he is working diligently, as he had said he would, and as all five members of this council asked him to do. We're the ones up here who directed him to go forward and come up with an alternative, if possible, and essentially make sure that we're following best management practices in the city of Sebastian to make sure that the citizens of this community are as safe as possible. So this council has done its job and directed the city manager to go forward and do that. He is in the process of doing that now, and he will provide that report when it's finished.
Or is any of the alternatives considered the mechanical?
Ma'am, we can't, I don't have the report, just like you don't have the report.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Russell Herman. I reside at 586 Redwood Court. I am concerned that the annexation vote was taken before there was a thorough airing of the issue by the good citizens of our city. I have much respect for people like you, willing to run for election and provide your expertise to public service. But this annexation vote shows a lack of sensitivity to the public and a lack of judgment. You should reconsider your annexation vote and set up a public forum to explain the pros and cons, explain why it should be done, and discover the mechanics to get proper sewage service to the property. You folks work hard, I know, but this issue needs more of your work. Please, get public discussion going to make sense of this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public have anything to bring this council? All right, seeing none. Thank you all so much. Item fourteen, fourteen A, resolution number R-19-32, parking and lieu agreement for 1550 Indian River Drive. Mr. Kilgore.
Thank you.
But I'd also let Lisa handle this presentation.
Not surprised. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, resolution of the city of Sebastian, Florida approving participation in the parking and lieu program, lien agreement, and covenant running with the land for L&amp;L Graff for property located at 1550 Indian River Drive, Sebastian, Florida, providing for termination, conflicts, and scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brady.
Thank you. This property is for the tenant of the property, the Crab Stop Restaurant. They have been finding success here in Sebastian, we're very happy to hear that. Unfortunately, it's ten pounds in a one-pound bag, that property, and they've been asking to expand their seating. That means they have to expand their parking, and they've had a few other issues regarding their site plan. So we've been working very diligently with them. We recommended parking and lieu, and that is what is in front of you this evening. They are requesting to purchase four spaces at a cost of $12,800, paid financed over time. This is the same as what you've seen while years ago now, we haven't really had a request for a while. We do have, with this, we would have about $55,000 in the parking and lieu account, which would hopefully equate to about twenty spaces. And I know that we're all excited to look for additional spaces, that we can put that in and start helping some of our other businesses that are also seeing success in the downtown area.
All right, thank you. I think this is a great use of that parking and lieu, and it's the reason that we have it in place, but all of the other issues, the other things that took place that got us to where we are today, I think, a little, you know, that cart was ahead of us, and so I just want to make sure that all of those things are completely resolved.
Are you asking about the site plan issues, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, they are working diligently on those, it has not been finalized as of yet. I do not know what the timeframe is on this.
Well, certainly.
Due date, but they are diligently working towards resolving all of these issues, I can assure you.
Okay, thank you. And this is part of resolving those issues.
That is correct, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Well, I just have.
Oh, I'm sorry, November first. They have until November first. I just wanted to make sure I got that date all to you. Sorry, thank you.
This kind of goes back to what we talked about, the other issue we talked about with the, right away. They did work without permits. That's what this says. It says, the redevelopment and structures that were installed on property without permits. My concern is that, all of a sudden, we're seeing people coming in and saying, well, I'm going to do this work without a permit, and when I get in trouble, I'm going to ask the council for help. That's kind of backwards to me, I think that's what you were kind of referencing.
Correct.
And so I'm concerned about that, because I don't, I mean, it is imperative that people who do work that requires a permit get the permit. It's a public safety issue. It's not just because we want their fees, it's a public safety issue. And if they do work without a permit, then we find improperly installed electrical services, we find improperly installed plumbing services, we find sewage in the river, we find, as we did on one of the docks down there many years ago, we find condensate and sewage dropping off the pipes that weren't properly installed into the river. We find all this kind of stuff take place. So the concerning thing to me is not the parking and lieu fund, that's simple, you know, we should approve that. The concerning thing to me is the fact that they did work without permits, and I, quite frankly, would like to know what steps have been taken to correct that, and what they've been required to do in the process of correcting that. Have they been required to pay fines? Have they been required to pay double permit fees? What exactly has taken place on that?
I'm sorry, Councilman Dodd, I may not be able to speak about it again, because it's under the special magistrate, am I correct? You had stated that for the last issue, and so I'm, I'm not sure how much detail. I do want you to know that, actually, I would love to, I would like to give kudos to our code enforcement and to our building department for really catching these violations before they went too far, and for making them work with our community development department in correcting them. But I will refer to the attorney.
No, I mean, it's, you know, the other one I was trying to keep you focused on, there was an abandonment of easement, and the same would apply here, I mean, you're looking at the approval.
Okay, so it doesn't actually say here that there's a code enforcement action against this property.
Right.
It did say that in the other thing.
Correct.
So since there's a code enforcement action against the property, I'm comfortable with that. I know that now the action's been taken to correct the fact that they've done what they shouldn't have done. That's all my concern was.
Absolutely, sir.
I think, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on resolution R-19-32? All right, seeing none. Council, what's your pleasure?
Recommend approval of R-19-32.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Anything else from council? Roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we maybe get a report on the next meeting, on if they've made any corrections to any of the issues?
Well, that's the special magistrate thing.
Oh, is that?
That's my fault. I apologize. We have to wait till that's done, and then we'll get a report back on it.
That's correct, and they have until November first to correct all of their actions prior to receiving any fines.
Okay, great.
Anything else? All right, good, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Yavino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Stokes, do you have anything great to bring us this evening?
The only items that, do you want to talk about this now? We were talking about the advertisement for the city attorney position, and council had asked last time to get some idea about a salary range. Mr. Carlisle did some calling around and checking, and Mr. Kilgore has some of those numbers. I also went to the Florida League of Cities, and they, of course, are a wealth of knowledge, although some of their stuff is dated, and it's, of course, based upon responses they get from cities that are sometime incomplete. But I think, based upon everything we're seeing, for an in-house, full-time in-house person, I think a comfortable range would be somewhere between ninety-five and one-twenty?
Of the samples we had, I took the low and the high that each one of them spoke about and averaged them out together, and I got an average then of between ninety-five to one-twenty-five. So splitting the difference would be one-ten.
Well, I think you could float the average, usually that's pretty good.
Well, and I think you'd probably want to at best advertise a range, because if you get something stellar, you might want to go on the high end.
No, I meant the range.
Right.
I think the range is something that'll work. I find that's always best, because it gets some of those guys that are maybe at the lower end of that range, but hot shot, ready to rock and roll, that'll want to come in and work for a little bit less. And then, of course, you get the old people like you, Jim, that are come in and just, you know, expect the high end, so we can get the full range of people.
I will tell you that, based upon the responses so far, we have several individuals who have applied, I think, three, but we're also still continuing to get a lot of inquiries from firms. One person actually sent in an application, but if you read her cover letter, she's applying on behalf of her firm. And I've gotten numerous calls likewise about firms that are still interested. So, I mean, if the individuals, we have three individuals right now, if that doesn't pick up, and you want to reconsider that, that's certainly something that doesn't need to be decided at night, that's as the process moves forward. But I think that, you know, probably within the next several weeks, we'll have enough of a pool that we can then talk about bringing them to meet you guys.
Sounds great, thank you. Anything else?
Nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kilgore?
I have no report.
All right, thank you very much. Glad to hear that, because your reports are usually long, and they're not really that enjoyable. They're not enjoyable, anyway.
Wasn't he giving that on behalf of Paul?
I think so, so you were spot on. Ms. Williams? Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Kitchen.
No, I have nothing tonight.
Councilmember Dodd?
Well, as usual, I do. This will actually address something that both of our public speakers talked about, and I try to be careful when I address this, but this last weekend, the TC Palm editorial board published an article, and I'm going to quote from their article. "Incumbents continue to poo-poo residents' concerns about the spraying of alleged carcinogen glyphosate to kill weeds along the banks of the Elcom Canal." I had to actually look up poo-poo, because I think I know what the literal meaning of that is, and I want to make sure I knew what the sarcastic editorial meaning of that was, and it actually means disrespect and ignore. Well, I'd like to let the Treasure Coast editorial staff of the TC Palm understand that they're absolutely incorrect in that, just like our two speakers were absolutely incorrect in that. This spring, as a result of many conversations we had about the use of these chemicals on our canal from some very concerned citizens, including one that spoke here tonight, this council, at my request, unanimously approved that we have the city manager produce a report that specifies what we have to do to solve our overall problem. I'd just like to remind everybody, including the editorial board, that if you solve the wrong problem, you still have a problem. And as many cities have found that have actually passed elected body things to stop using Roundup Classic, that they end up using things like Daquod, which is a first cousin of Agent Orange, and all of the guys in the white shirts sitting down there probably all remember what Agent Orange did to the world. They quit using Roundup Classic, but they started using a substitute, because it didn't include glyphosate. We chose, this council and our city staff, to address the entire problem. The report that's being produced by our city manager addresses all removal of vegetation from the canals for any reason. That's what drives us having to use chemicals, is the vegetation in the canals. I think many people are going to be somewhat surprised. I have discussed the report with the city manager. It is, right now, in its final stages. It is being reviewed by a new city engineer to assist the city manager in making sure that some of his assumptions aren't correct, or are correct. I think there will be some surprises here. And I would like to remind everybody that we don't poo-poo our residents, that's not what this council does, that's not what I personally do, I have a little bit more integrity than that. And I get him kind of tired of reading things in social media about how less, how little integrity we have, and how little we care about the citizens of Sebastian. If we didn't care, we wouldn't be here. So to the editorial board, you have poo-pooed this. Check your resources. My phone number and my email is on the city website. Anybody in this city who wants any questions answered about any issue, don't post it on Nextdoor, call me. Send me a direct email, and I will respond. That's all I have to say, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I can't follow that, I've got nothing. Councilmember McPartland?
Yes, sir.
All right, I just have one thing. The Treasure Coast Food Bank invites you to the kickoff of an exciting community event. Expect to draw hundreds of volunteers to give back to their community. I apologize for not handing this to Ms. Kitchen earlier. As an announcement, at eight AM on Friday, October 25th, Treasure Coast Food Bank kicks off its fifth annual Pack the House event presented by Wells Fargo. If you want any information on that, go to wwwstophunger.org. There being no further business, we are adjourned.